The end of summer sales event is happening now at Bill Gatten Honda in Bristol. Save hundreds, even thousands on newer used vehicles with interest rates as low as 0.9%. Test drive the all-new Ridgeline and the entire Honda fleet available now. We need locally owned vehicles, so we will pay you instant cash if you trade or not. Come see us on the Parkway in Bristol for huge discounts from now until the end of summer. Visit us online 24/7 at BillGattenHonda.com.
And remember, at Bill Gatten Honda, we've got a Honda with your name on it.
It's the summer full of savings sales event going on now at Bill Gatten Honda in Bristol. Save hundreds, even thousands on newer used vehicles with interest rates as low as 0.9%. Come test drive the all-new Ridgeline, available now. We need locally owned vehicles, so we'll pay you instant cash if you trade or not. Come see us on the Parkway in Bristol for big discounts through the entire summer, and we're open late. Visit us online 24/7 at BillGattenHonda.com.
And remember, at Bill Gatten Honda, we've got a Honda with your name on it.
Bill Gatten Honda, if you want the best selection, come on in.
The Bill Gatten crew is waiting for you.
When you're looking for hometown services, come on in.
With a lifetime warranty, drive it for life.
Bill Gatten is the only Honda dealer servicing the price since 1973.
On the volunteer Parkway in Bristol, come on in.
We've got a Honda with your name on it.
Obviously, it's an important day for us, and I will, I will, normally, in our sessions, we do not require writing, but this is being so important. Commissioner Sheldon chose enough to use his time to do that, and I believe we're in a proper place here. So, the folks had a sought recognition. We're only, we're gonna be on amendment number one, we're not on the original motion. Commissioner Vance, would you like to hear amendment number one before you speak? And Commissioner Kilgore, is that a problem with you too?
Well, I don't know what amendment number one is. Stop right there. I haven't heard one before.
Well, you've asked, well, let me ask you, why do you seek recognition?
Just so I can be in query when it gets time.
Commissioner Kilgore, is it alright with you that we're getting amendment on the floor? I recognize you now.
I thought there was a motion on the floor. You could do 1.5% across the board, 844,000. I thought that was a motion on second.
Well, you seconded it that way?
No, I didn't. I asked if that was a motion.
Okay, you're saying there's a motion on the floor?
That's what I heard, yes.
Commissioner Sheldon, evidently, there's a motion on the floor. We'll have to go back and check the tape, but would you like to withdraw that motion and go move to?
Bill's correct. It's Gavin Larry Street. It's on the floor. I think I need a second.
Okay, if, I don't think what Mr. Kilgore just explained to me as being a motion on the floor reflects your amendment number one.
Yep.
This is $844,000. I thought that was a motion. Okay, okay, we're good?
That's what I heard.
Okay, well, that, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Sheldon to explain amendment number one, that we have filed with the clerk and on the desk, and then we'll have a second and a discussion. I'm not trying to put anybody through the wringer here.
I just wanna say, tax rate.
We don't take yard money.
And I can't see that reducing every single line within the departments by 1.5% would impair their ability to perform the mission. Again, I'm not crazy about across the board cuts. If we're up to me, I think we've been more detailed in the way we approached this, but we are where we are. So, if I can get a second, we can discuss it. I'm prepared to offer other amendments.
You've heard the motion for amendment number one. Madam Clerk, well, first of all, do we have a second?
A second.
We have second, Mr. Hood, I believe, and Mr. Hartwell. Madam Clerk, would you read the amendment, so that we'll know what we're talking about when we're ready to enter discussion on amendment number one? Madam Clerk.
To reduce the general fund spending across all budget lines by 1.5%, each line resulting in a total savings of $844,000, or $844,159.
Okay, we're on amendment number one. Do, Mr. Kilgore, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern with this amendment is we had no choice about funding the Sheriff's Department because of the lawsuit, and I don't know how you can take 1.5% away from them whenever we attempt a law court decision to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Other discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Sheldon, you're recognized.
I would be happy to, in view of what Commissioner Kilgore said, I would be happy to exclude all lines contained within the Sheriff's Department and the jail and ask Mr. Bailey to recalculate the program.
In the interest of time, I'm not gonna require that be in writing as long as the clerk can record that. Wait a minute, you got it, do you? Okay, so, the amended motion is to exclude Sheriff's Department funding. Is that, you wanna read that for me, Jimmy? Let's make sure we got it right.
Reduce general fund spending across all budget lines excluding all Sheriff's Department lines by 1.5%. Each line resulting in a total savings of $844,159.
And amendment one, amendment one to amendment one. He has motion moved, and we need to say, Pat, if you will, I'll try to clarify, is that you, his motion is to remove Sheriff's Department funding from across the board cuts.
And I'm doing that because I believe that...
Well, let's do that in discussion, let's get the amendment out first, okay? Is what I said right?
Yes, sir.
Do you, you got that?
Yeah, I read it.
You've got, have you got?
To reduce general fund spending across all budget lines excluding all Sheriff's Department by 1.5%, each line resulting in a total savings of $844,000.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's where we are.
The number would have to be recalculated. I'm basing this on that Attorney Street rendered opinion that we cannot, on this date, do anything to upset the agreement of the municipal sheriff.
And, let me, let me set the stage where we are. Madam Clerk, I did not allow him to amend his original amendment number one, so we have an amendment on the floor to exclude Sheriff's Department. The amendment number one to amendment number one to exclude Sheriff's Department funding and whatever else you said about recalculating, Pat, we'll have that on the record. Do we have a second to amendment number one of amendment number one?
Second.
We have second. Commissioner Johnson, we're open for discussion on the second. Commissioner Vance.
I've passed her on.
Did you say you're, I've passed, I don't know. Any discussion on amendment one to amendment one? See, now we're red vote.
No, we have, we got the one.
Mr. Houser, I didn't see you. You're recognized.
You know, women who've been budgeted 36 months, and if we just take a 1.5% reduction across the board, then that tells me that a lot of the departments padded their budget, you know, a little excess. And I know for a fact that some of these budgets are so tight that it's gonna impact personnel and so on. And at this late of day, trying to cut it across the board, to me, that's not being fiscal responsible, and of course, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Houser. Mr. Vance, you seek recognition on amendment number one to amendment number one.
Well, I'm not really sure about the sponsor's math. He said to reduce the general fund spending by 1.5% across the board of $844,159.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to do this right. That's on the original amendment. We're on amendment number one, which is to exclude Sheriff's Department.
But what is our total savings then?
I'm sorry?
If we're gonna exclude the Sheriff's Department, what is our total savings if we're here to do the, reduce the accounts by 1.5%?
Good question.
I don't think we know what we're voting on. What do you know, Mr. Hood? Would you explain to us? Okay, how much we talk about?
No, 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 no. Let me recognize people. Pat, you, would you turn your microphone back on?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vance, since I asked you as sponsor of the amendment to tell us what the savings would be excluding Sheriff's Department, would you respond to that?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna give you time to do this, we're gonna take time to do this right.
Reduce the $844,000 by $180,000. Somebody wants to do that math real fast, we'll come up with a number.
Mr. Vance?
New total on math, if I get, math is not my strongest. 644,159, it being the reduction to the general fund.
Mr. Vance?
I'd like to refer that question to the Council of Legends Director. I'd like to know the impact of this amendment, 'cause I don't come up here with Mr. Bailey nothing more, so we're gonna reduce the general fund.
I think that's a proper question, Mr. Bailey.
On or off? On or off? We're on amendment of the amendment, we're not on what they...
Well, and Bill, the amendment, the amendment is to exclude Sheriff's Department, and the question is, on the amendment, the question is, how much would that be? And so, the amendment is gonna result in a reduction of amendment number one, so the question was, if we adopt amendment one to amendment one, what will the reduction be? Mr. Sheldon, you'd like 644,000, 1.5%? Mr. Vance has asked Mr. Bailey to opine on that, and Mr. Bailey, and I'm gonna compliment Mr. Bailey if he can give an accurate answer to respond to that. If not, he will not. Mr. Bailey, you're working, so...
I believe it would affect the 300,000 and the other 150,000.
I'm sorry, could you turn on your microphone there?
In other words, the total corporations out of the Sheriff's Office are, with them out too, if you reduce it by, those took that total amount, you'd be kicking out $323,655 at that. About a half a buck there, but I didn't put, I rounded the figures off and put them in from there's thousand, and took 1.5 into those, 'cause you've got $20 million right off for the sheriff, 11.5, and not at $10 million, 21.5. I accept Mr. Bailey's figures, that would bring the net total down to 52504 in terms of savings in the general fund.
Okay, so, is that your question, Mr. Vance?
I feel better about this.
You feel better about that, I wish to. Okay, we're on discussion on amendment number one, so amendment number one. Any further discussion? You read the vote. All in favor of the amendment?
I would like a roll call vote, please.
You can request that, and I will ask Madam Clerk to take the vote on, did you seek recognition, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanna make the point that the total figure they're using for the general fund is the same thing I figured, but we've already taken off several things that have had to do here in lump sums. That's already off, and then we're gonna take another percent, or 1.5% from them, according to what this says. So, the figure's gonna increase, and these people are gonna be affected more so than those that don't have a percent, is already reduced with their budget, so on point I'm on.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Commissioner Russell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, will you restate the motion and the amendments that we're voting on? Thanks.
Madam Clerk, if you will.
Amendment number one to amendment number one to resolution number two is to exclude all Sheriff's Department lines, which will recalculate the total savings. That's what we're voting on first.
That's number one to amendment one, and that's what we're gonna ask you to vote on right now.
Bowery?
No.
Colton?
No.
Cole?
No.
Gardner?
No.
Grubb?
No.
Hare?
No.
Parker Road?
Yes.
R.?
No.
Aaron?
No.
Hood?
Yes.
Houser?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kilgore?
No.
McGoughlin?
No.
Morell?
No.
Neil?
No.
Bobby Russell?
No.
Cheryl Russell?
No.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Vance?
No.
Williams?
No.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Five yes, 17 no, and two absent.
Having received the constitutional majority and the negative, amendment one to amendment one is rejected. We're back on amendment one, so if there are any discussion on amendment one, Commissioner Sheldon.
Okay. If we're back to amendment one with no alteration, then we would be at a total savings of $844,159. At this point in time, I wanna ask Mr. Street if the point that Mr. Kilgore made about the settlement of the lawsuit would mean that we can't affect this proposed budget in terms of the sheriff and jail.
Mr. Street, you're, you're recognized.
In my opinion, you have no choice. You must fund the settlement. Now, are there provisions in the sheriff's budget that are not part of the settlement? I don't, I can't answer that, I don't know. So, is there any money in the sheriff's budget that is not involved in the settlement? I somewhat doubt it, but I don't know that. But, the question, but the thing you need to know is, you have to fund the settlement, you have no choice.
Then, in view of the number that Mr. Bailey gave of $323,000 or so that would result in being taken away from the sheriff, I do not wish to jeopardize our legal standing here on this case, therefore, I withdraw this particular amendment.
Without objection, any objection? Seeing no objection, amendment number one is withdrawn by the sponsor. Mr. Sheldon, you're recognized on amendment...
I'll proceed to amendment number two.
You're, you're recognized on that, it's time to talk about it.
Thank you, sir, in this category. I propose to eliminate all funding for Northeast State Account Number 71900-300. That total is $200,000. My rationale is the Tennessee promise obviated the need for educate and grow, and that was the original reason for this $200,000.
And Mr. Sheldon, and we will enter that as motion, Mr. Street, as I should be recognized, and...
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and I, go ahead and punch your button again.
No, I'm sorry, I must have misread it.
Oh, okay. We have a proper motion on the floor, you've heard the motion, we have a second.
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Hood. Any other seconds? Okay, seeing none, we're open for discussion on amendment number two. Anybody want to come in on number two? Mr. Grant?
You know, the sooner we can get people into the workforce, the stronger and quicker we will have more economic development. This money that is appropriated for that is used for dual enrollment. That simply means that a senior can get college credit and get into workforce that much quicker. So, in my estimation, it would be a strong mistake to eliminate these funds, because what we're doing, we're postponing when people can get into the workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houser. Commissioner Stanley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I would recommend that everybody vote against this amendment. Like Dana said, this right here is for our kids and the future here at our county. This is the whole reason that we are staying here today, raising these taxes, is to better our county with education. Why are we taking away from it? Our students from Sullivan County, Kingsport, and Bristol has benefited from this scholarship, and I would encourage everybody to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Stanley. Commissioner Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question, does anyone have a figure on how many students actually were able to take advantage of this program? I do believe it's a great program. I also see this in service for submitting, but have any, have any children who are able to take advantage of this?
Commissioner Stanley, you got it, don't we?
Yes, I do have the figures. We had, we spent over $175,000, owes that $200,000 this year. We had $118,000 come from the county, and the rest of it comes from the city. So, these children, the billboards at least being out here, those kids go and get their certificate for their welding and different programs out here, and they are licensed to go out here and work before they even graduate. They graduate from college before they even graduate high school. This has nothing to do with Tennessee promise. This right here is letting the kids work before they have to go out here and take two years of college.
Commissioner Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna clarify too, that the Tennessee Promise dollars do not go into effect before a student till their fall semester of their freshman year of college, so the dual enrollment, they are not, they're not qualified for that, and there's a cost accrued with that, so I, again, like Mr. Stanley, I'm not gonna vote for this.
Commissioner Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna state for the record, back in March, when the Administrative Committee was discussing the budget, we unanimously voted to withdraw this $200,000 from the budget process that was in this vote, and now it's back in the budget.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Sheldon?
I believe that the dual enrollment program does a lot of good, but it should be something that's covered under the school budget, not the county general fund, and Northeast State is not known for sterling fiscal management.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you read the amendment?
Amendment number two, to eliminate all funding, $200,000 for Northeast State Account Number 71900-300.
Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Bowery?
No.
Colton?
No.
Cole?
No.
Gardner?
No.
Grubb?
No.
Hare?
No.
Parker Road?
No.
R.?
No.
Aaron?
No.
Hood?
Yes.
Houser?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Kilgore?
No.
McGoughlin?
No.
Morell?
No.
Neil?
No.
Bobby Russell?
No.
Cheryl Russell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stanley?
No.
Vance?
No.
Williams?
No.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Three yes, 19 no, and two absent.
Having received the constitutional majority and the negative, amendment number two is rejected. Commissioner Sheldon, you're recognized on amendment number three.
Mayor, I believe that my other amendments would probably fall under the charitable and civic organization category, so I'm correct, and I don't have any more amendments to offer in this specific category.
Okay, so amendment number four, which is later on the floor, does not apply to your original motion. Three and four will apply at another point, and you withdraw those in this, on this motion. Okay.
Four more amendments, they go to the next category.
Very good. Okay, we're back on the original motion by the Chairman of our Budget Committee, Mr. Williams, and seconded by the Director of the Budget Committee, Mr. Bowery. Any further discussion on the original motion for adoption of the budget, as explained in item two on today's agenda? Mr. Vance?
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment to make to the legislature.
You're recognized for that purpose.
Thank you. Each year, we prepare the budget for the county. We always take in consideration of our county employees. I know during some of the budget hearings, we talked about 2%, we talked about 1%. I'd like to make a motion, and I have it written down, it's provide a 3% raise to the general fund employees that were currently employed prior to July 1st, 2017. The cost of the general fund will be $345,000, which includes a benefit cost of 23.2%. I am sponsor of it, Randy Morell is the co-sponsor, so I'd like to entertain that as an amendment to the budget, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vance proposes amendment number two to the budget, seconded by Mr. Morell. Mr. Vance has provided the clerk with a written copy of that amendment. We're open for forward discussion. Mr. Kilgore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question on this one is the same as it was on the other one, the Sheriff's Department. Settlement, give them a 3% raise, so I don't think that we can go across the board with a 3% raise if they have already got a 3% raise.
Mr. Vance, look, did you wanna reply to that, or should I?
Well, I mean, I don't think they deserve 8%, I mean, they may do, feel like it, but I don't think, what I'm trying to do is give a equitable raise of 3% to employees, so the Sheriff's Department included that, and those...
You didn't play that.
No, they are excluded from that, they're getting a 5%.
I was gonna ask if you would care for Mr. Bailey to explain that to the Sheriff's Department, in individual funds. I can call on him for a re-vocationation, thank you, Bill for the question. Mr. Bailey?
What that calculation was based upon was each active employee position in the departments that do not have a raise already provided for them, and it would be, in other words, the Sheriff's Department would be the exception. There are some grants there that we look at separately, they're funded, they're funded by the grant. This would not be, this would be local funding for those things, these statutory positions that are there, no, they're not covered. This is removing all of that, just the rank and file employees that are getting something some other way.
Anyone? Mr. Bailey?
No.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bailey, or...
Mr. Chairman, please forgive me. I may have missed the total, and I apologize.
Okay, no, we need to...
Okay, the total amount are approximately 230 employees that are gonna be getting a 3% raise. The total cost, including the benefits, which is considered at 23.2%, the total cost to the general fund is $345,000. To give the employees the raises of 3%, now, the constitutional office holders are one that's been approved by the state, they are not included in that. These are all the other employees that do not get anything from the lawsuit and from us, and Mr. Bailey may have addressed that.
That's for the general fund, the proposal was cover those other funds and similar type employees, solid waste down the line, which is a very, much smaller amount of money for each one of those. If I can get back and shoot paper about that one.
That is your question? Yes, sir. And I hate to piggyback one more, but when was the last time that they received a raise? I should know that.
I think they were saying the last... I think they were saying the last raise last year. Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
And on a $30,000 employee, that's going to equivalate up to $900 more a year, which would be on the 26th pay period, about $35 if I pay that much more.
Mr. Wood, you're recognized.
Yeah, just some frustrations I'd like to begin here.
Is it have to do with the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then you're recognized.
Yeah, the question I have is why does this come to us so late? Why didn't this come through the regular budget process? And that also speaks to the reason why we're here on August 31st to approve the budget when it merits more times more consideration than what we're given. And I know Mr. Sherrill has carried this ball for a long time, saying, let's get this done earlier. Let's get this done earlier.
I was asking for the nation. Commissioner Rowe.
Well, my question on this is that the way the motion is stated, it's all county employees, and of course, I automatically assume that school system employees are excluded because they, the raise built into their budget as it was presented as. But with the county end funds, then they more than likely are not going to be able to fulfill that raise that was originally budgeted. So, would this cover school system employees as well?
Commissioner Sherrill, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, about a year and a half ago, I proposed that we formally study our compensation. I think that's relevant to this conversation.
We're going to go on. You're going to call.
Because ad hoc method of raising employee pay is just, it's not a good way of doing business. My friend over here, Jeff Lenny, in the city of Kingsport, they formally study their pay through a comparability study every four or five years. Ad hoc pay raises make no sense in terms of what's right or fair or economically feasible or anything. That's why I stand opposed.
Commissioner Harrow, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just say that I would hope that if this goes through, that everybody would know that doesn't include the commissioners sitting here, death rates, and the black lady. I would not, I would not want anyone to leave here with that thought in mind. Are you going to get any more close to putting that in writing? Because it's not so.
Mr. Kogor, you're recognized.
I guess I was looking for a clarification again on the general fund, I think, what the motion was. So, that automatically includes the school fund, correct?
Yes.
That's all I want to say. Some last question about the school.
Very good. Any other, any other discussion on the motion on the floor? I, I'm sorry. That was the answer. It doesn't include schools. Mr. Stanley.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to say, in the highway administration, is there already an increase in theirs? I don't know if that might be addressed to GM?
No, I think that's a question for Mr. Vane, actually. Would you direct, direct that to, would you repeat your, would you repeat your question?
Is there already an increase allocated to the highway department employees?
He asked, he asked in his description of funds, he is asking for, he is asking for an increase that would be less than, I think, 2% is what he asked for. Didn't set out a specific amount, but he did state that in the discussions.
Was that approved through the budget and taken in his budget?
Right now, it's in his budget. Still, we left up for his concerns with his body proven raises for employees.
Any further discussion on this, on the motion? See, Commissioner Vance, we're ready to, we're ready to vote. I'm going to take a voice vote on this, and we'll go the roll call if we need to. All those who favor the motion, as you understand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We're back on the original motion to sponsor the budget. Mr. Williams renews his motion. Mr. Bowery renews his second. Any discussion on the original motion to adopt the budget as presented? Commissioner Kogor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a statement, I guess, not a motion. I'm serving toward the end of my third term, and I have never voted for a tax increase since I've been sitting in one of these seats. I'm changing that today if I want to support the budget. And the reason I'm doing it is because of two things. One, the $140 million school bond issue that we have to pay if the citizens of this county ask for that to be done, and I voted for it because they asked for it. So, the taxpayers asked for that increase. The other one is the sheriff's lawsuit. Someone else mentioned earlier about the fact, she was about the fact that the sheriff sued the county, we settled it, which cost us money. Then, election happened, and someone said he got 75% of the vote, the numbers I heard was 52% of the people who actually voted in that election. So, to me, that tells me that the people also support what the sheriff's giving. So, with those two caveats involved, I'm going to vote for the budget because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Kogor. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? See now, this vote's going to be on the board. Did I miss you again? You click it. Sure, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, here it is, August 31st again, and we're looking at the budget. Let me just say that we made, the administrative committee had our recommendations and our suggestions, voted on things, and sent them on to the budget committee. So, I just want to go on record right now and saying that I cannot support this budget as it is presented right now. This goes back to December when we were voting on the school issue thing. There wasn't, or some difficulties in information then. It was a rushed decision. I voted against it then. I'm consistent with my voting and staying with that. And you all know me. I am not against education. I'm all for education. I feel like that's what gives us more economic opportunities. I would not be sitting here right now if it were not for my education. But I'm also a city taxpayer too. I choose to live in the city. I choose to live in Sullivan County. And I think that city taxpayers, you know, need to be recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vance, you, well, I want to support this budget, and it's not a perfect budget, and I know that there's been a lot of discussions about this budget. But I want to, I want to just say briefly, the last three years, the commissioners in this chamber, we have, we have had some of the largest challenges that we've had to face. When we first came on the commission three years ago, there was $11 million proposal to buy an 800 radio system for the cities and the counties that our public safety sector is now rooted in the benefit of. We may not be what everybody wants, but it's what we promised the taxpayers, that we would do as best we could do is hold the line on the taxes and not cost a large amount of money to the taxpayers. I committed nine cents when I voted for a $140 million lawsuit. When I would go back and look, and this isn't directly towards the sheriff, but this is looking as to the commission, the last two years, we've put over $2.3 million additional funding. Last year, we sat here and gave additional personnel, nursing staff, jailers, mechanics to the sheriff's department. So, this commission, each one of us, we have done our best to be diligent with the taxpayers' money and to handle the issue the elected officials have put in front of us. It was a shame that the lawsuit had to be. We are dealing with that. It's a shame that we've had to do things, and the communications may have not been as greatly as it could have been in what we're having to do to our school systems. But as I told Mr. Lenny back there, and I told people from the city of Bristol, we're, we have got a lot of great things going on in this county. This is an impact to the schools. I'm just asking them to be patient with us. We've got phase two of the school plan to go, let's not burn any bridges. Let's not tear down any relationships that we've created between the city and the county and the school systems. But right now, I don't feel that we can do any better than what we've got in this budget. And I do believe the cooperation between the city and the county and the school system will continue to be positive going forward. Not everybody's going to walk out of this chamber getting exactly what they need or what they feel like they want. But one thing, one thing I can say, I feel like I am in tune to the public here. The public don't want no more than nine cents this time. That doesn't mean that we can't restore funding back to the schools later on. There's something that we can't do to help the schools in the city and the county. So, I'm just asking everybody to be patient. Let's get through this year, and there'll be people sitting in these chambers next year that'll be here looking at their concerns, just like we have with the sheriff's department suit. That's why I want to support the budget. That's why I feel like it's the best we can do. It's not a perfect budget, but it's the best we can do right now. And remember, the taxpayers are the ones that have to pay the bill. And one last statement I want to say, when the argument earlier about people's taxes going down, there's 76,000 parcels in this county. 28,000 of those parcels saw a reduction in their assessed value. 48,000 saw no increases, but saw some increases. The TIS are a great fund to create sales tax collection. But I think there's a lot of people that have learned the things, the decisions that we've made has been good decisions, but there's been some complications with those decisions we've made. It's when we pull $52 million off our total assessed value of this county, because we are so dependent on the general fund to operate off the property taxes. So, I just want to say that. I think that's a synopsis of everywhere we've been. And that's the reason that Mark Vance can vote for this budget and feel like that he's done the best he could, as the rest of you guys worked hard to get here too. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Chairman Williams.
I mentioned this fact one time, I guess, already, but just want to emphasize again that we're, with all these things Mark mentioned, and which I agree, and all that put together and all that added up, we've only increased property tax 4%. 4%. And again, that's $22 on 100,000 house, and you can run it up to however far you want to. That's all it is. I mean, that's kind of unknown and unheard of in surrounding counties. One of our surrounding counties had a 41 cent tax increase last year, and they put 31 cents up in their renovation fund, didn't even have any work spent if they decided to do that. So, we're only talking about that, that particular amount of money. There's one thing in the budget that I need to correct, in that recreation money going to the schools that we put in the 700, that should have been a million one if I want to figure that's going to run this year. And please, if you'll vote, if you'll accept that and place that there on the.
Sad truth is, in the five years I've been here, the commission has never attempted to reduce spending. The first thing private businesses do, and corporations, is when they're having financial challenges, is they look to where they cut back. They don't automatically raise the price of their service and their product. I believe that we could, if we attacked this, we could cut out some spending without adversely affecting the ability of the county to perform its mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherrill. Mr. Harper, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let people know, let this commission know, I try to be a team player. I try to be a good commissioner. I try to be assertive to people. I was fortunate to be elected chairman of the executive committee, and I'm very proud of my executive committee. I really appreciate the time and patience that you all took to put in to help prepare this budget. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of in-work that we can take out as being done by the executive committee. And I realize the budget committee has really the final say of the recommendation to the full commission. I didn't support the schools facility project because I feel like there was a lot better options out there, and I wish we could have had more time to go into that. It wasn't given to us, but just one way, up or down. And I couldn't support that because my constituents didn't support that. However, I can't support this budget. And the reason why I can't is because I feel like if I do support this budget, I did support the facility study and adopted. So, I thank you for your time. I thank my committee for their hard work, and I just hate that there's not much to say, but just thanks to the budget committee for the job they done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Russell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I've heard from many of my constituents. I always want to be true to my constituents and everything. And I want everyone to know that, you know, we're taxpayers too. As I say, I live in the city, so I pay city taxes, and I pay county taxes. So, this affects us also, you know, a few dollars here and a few dollars there. Sullivan County really hasn't seen much growth, you know, either in population or as in economic growth. So, I mean, we're pretty flat, you know, on that kind of thing. So, when you're saying, you know, a dollar or two, or a dollar, a dollar here or a dollar there, that's a dollar that I could go, you know, buy a new car, or do this, or do, you know, something else with. So, I think we always need to, you know, keep that in mind. That, that's money in my pocket and in our pockets that, you know, is kind of coming out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adopt item number two on today's budget? I look at the board, and I look at you.
All questions.
We have called a question. I believe we're not necessarily prepared about it. Would you set the board up? When the board opens, please cast your votes on item number two. Madam Clerk, please the board open. Now, obviously, we're going to have, they can vote on item number two. Does anyone wish to change their vote? Anyone wish to change their vote? Ever received constitutional majority? Item number two is adopted as amended. Moving on. Madam Clerk, register the vote.
Starting yes, one pass, eight no, two yes.
Moving on, on our agenda to item number three. Commissioner Williams is out of the room right now. We'll wait till he returns. We can add item number three. Mr. Williams, we, we're back in session, I'm sorry. We adopted item number two, and next up, we have item number three. Commissioner Sheldon, for what reason?
I'm just waiting my turn to turn then.
Okay, okay. Let me turn you off here and press down Mr. Williams. Item number three.
Item number three. Item number three is a resolution that we're required to pass that makes a list of runs with, of the different organizations we fund, and we have to pull that out and do that separate even though it's already been in the budget. So it's just a, it's really a formality to be sent to the public.
Mr. Williams, move to adopt item number three as published, taken by Commissioner Bowery. Now we're ready for discussion. Commissioner Sheldon, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our citizens may not realize that this totaled us over three point three million dollars, and it's totally discretionary. We do not have to spend this money by state law. We do choose, obviously, to do so, and there's some good reasons for a lot of these, particularly in fire departments. Having said that, my First Amendment, and I request again on all amendments, roll call vote, and it's been properly given to the clerk, the entire list, the entire three point three plus million, I would reduce funding in every line by two percent for net savings of sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars. Again, two percent would not reap a hardship on any one of these particular organizations.
Amendment number one, if I may clear, Madam Clerk, would you read? I believe it's originally listed as item number three, but it's amendment number one Not necessarily that I have.
Amendment number one to resolution number three is to, for charitable and civic organizations, the entire list, reduce funding, all lines by two percent, net savings of sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay, you've heard the clerk's explanation. Mr. Sheldon moves to adopt amendment number one. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hood seconds the motion to adopt amendment number one. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Carter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure everyone on the body could relate to a number of the organizations. Personally, I'm on the, excuse me, the Kingport City Life Saving Group Board. They do a lot of great work, a lot of work that people probably don't even realize they did. And I'm speaking from just that perspective. Their budget is stretched tighter in two coats of paint, as it is, and I appreciate that the spirit of the amendment, but I'm personally going to have to vote no to an overall cut, just a lot of it has to do with just my individual experience with that one body. And I'm sure we could go through the entire room and find somebody that can relate to yet another, so I'm going to, I'm going to vote no, and I appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Carter, we have had further discussion on amendment number one, item number three on today's agenda. Seeing no further discussion, we're ready to adopt. Madam Clerk, would you take the vote on amendment number one, item number three?
Bowery?
No.
Carlton?
No.
Cole?
No.
Harper?
No.
Hare?
No.
Parker Rose?
No.
R.
No.
Aaron?
No.
Hood?
Yes.
Housner?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Gilgore?
No.
Wathlin?
No.
Morell?
No.
Neal?
No.
Bobby Russell?
No.
Cheryl Russell?
No.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stanley?
No.
Vance?
No.
And Williams?
No.
Does anyone wish to change their vote? Two yes, twenty-nine, no, two absent.
Having received the constitutional majority in the negative, amendment number one is rejected. Commissioner Hood, for what reason?
Just a question about the animal shelter.
Commissioner Hood, that's an item. Chairman renews his motion for adoption of item number three, taken by Commissioner Bowery. Any further discussion on item number three? Commissioner Sheldon, you're recognized.
Three more amendments that pertain to specific organizations, and the reason behind this is the fact that these organizations were picked for increases when several other organizations were not, and it just seems like a basic fairness that why are we giving these folks more money and not the others? And, and, and the budget committee went against recommendations from the other two committees. So the first one, amendment two, is to reduce the recommended amount of ten thousand to help the King sport and fund it at two thousand, which was the current level of funding based on the past fiscal year.
Commissioner Sheldon moves to adoption of amendment number two as filed with the clerk. We have a second. We have a second for amendment number two. Seeing none, amendment number two dies for lack of section.
May I proceed on the next one?
The, the chairman renews his motion for adoption of item number three, taken by Commissioner Bowery, and we're back on the original, and Commissioner Sheldon, you're recognized.
The next amendment is to reduce the recommended amount in the budget to tourism slash net up, account number five-eight-one-one-zero-dash-three-hundred, so that the, the funding that I'm recommending would be twenty-five hundred, which is the level they had this past year.
You've heard the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, properly second from the motion on the floor, any discussion?
The one local tourism agency that we have is net. We're trying to do all these things in one go. We've cut money in tourism, and this is the one organization that can help put our name on, on the map. And for every one dollar that you spend in tourism, it will generate three dollars. And to me, it's like stabbing yourself in the back, because we keep talking about economic development, we keep talking about economic development within the county, and here, we're trying to work with an organization that can help promote us, and I'm, I'm personally against that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Housner. Commissioner Sheldon, you're recognized.
Yes, I love you, but if I followed that logic, we ought to give them a million dollars.
Any further discussion on amendment number three to item number three on today's agenda? Mr. Harper?
Thank you, Mayor. I, just a couple of days ago, drove by three ninety-four and the, the good job that the job corps did on the rock thing they built for us, and I asked myself, because I'm by myself, we are a large county, Tennessee East with the Cho's to put their corporate offices here, and I'm thinking to myself, yet we can't get a sign that says this is wrong. And I think that is a bad reflection on us as a county, and then it falls back in our way, I think, that it's just a bad reflection, that we can't at least, I mean, we could put something up on a piece of plywood if that's nailed, which would be bad, but we do need a sign. I'd like to see that get done.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Mr. Aldrich, you're recognized on the chairman's, on Mr. Sheldon's motion.
For the information's sake, there's going to be a dedication groundbreaking, the eighteenth, where we put the sign up.
Is that out of order?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
We won't get... We love remarketing effort, but it's out of order.
Any further discussion on amendment number three to item number three, back to Mr. Sheldon. Seeing none, I believe we have that on the board, so we, and Mr. Sheldon has requested a roll call vote. So when the board opens, please cast your vote on amendment number three. Everyone cast your vote. I thought I explained that, but I'll do it one more time. Stop the vote. Commissioner Sheldon moved adoption of amendment number three, which is to... Madam Clerk, would you read it?
To find the tourism data at twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, continue the vote. Cast your vote. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, register the vote.
Three yes, nineteen no, and two absent.
Having received a majority in the negative, amendment number three is rejected. We're back on the original motion by Chairman Williams for adoption of item number three on today's budget, taken by Commissioner Bowery, Commissioner Sheldon.
Last amendment.
You're recognized.
Same rationale. Why give these folks more money when we didn't give those folks more money? But it's account number five-six-seven-zero-zero, Love City Park. I'm recommending that we continue the rate we had last year of five thousand dollars.
You've heard the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Madam Clerk, record that. Motion's probably before the body, we're ready for discussion on amendment number four. Commissioner Grubbs, you're recognized.
I would like to say that I hope you all will not support that amendment, because this is a one-time request this year, this is not going to be an annual ten thousand request for the years coming forward. This is to do some maintenance to the, uh, Love City Park that runs across the, what once was known as Big Lake area, and so I hope you will support it, because there are a lot of things that need to be taken care of, and it will not be continued in the coming years at that rate.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any, any further discussion? Commissioner Sheldon, you're recognized. I touched on, go ahead and do it again. Push the button.
I pushed it.
Well, I...
Okay, push it again. Can I just talk my own?
And I keep trying, I keep trying to turn it on. You're on, I'm turning on, believe me.
Look, I'd like to end on a cause to note and recognize Commissioner Kent Wathlin on his sixtieth wedding anniversary.
Hallelujah, that's out of order. Commissioner Sheldon, you're recognized on the amendment. Are we ready to vote? Do we have any further discussion on amendment number four? I believe that's against the rules, gentlemen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. We vote on the board, vote when the board opens. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, register the vote.
Three yes, nineteen no, and two absent.
Having received the constitutional majority in the negative, item number three is rejected. We are back on item number three, and Commissioner Williams renews his motion for adoption of item number three on today's budget. Commissioner Hood, you're recognized.
Yes, sir, thank you. Just try again, there might be an error on this list here. Said SPK Animal Shelter, should that rightly be called Pet Works?
Pet Works is a DPA, uh, doing, I mean, so doing business as a DPA, same.
Right, okay, okay. Did you hear the explanation, Mr. Hood?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I've been hearing some discussion about a way to finance, get this project moving and, and it's out of order.
No, you're, you're not out of order, we're, we're on that, and this, this is good discussion. You go ahead and ask.
Well, I'd like to understand if there has been a proposal, or what, what it was. It sounded like something could be spread over ten years or something, and would be affordable, and something we really need in Solon County.
I would, I, I shouldn't answer that, I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Bailey to speak to the timing of that proposal and where we were, because there was an interest, an item of interest. And, and, and her, her. I may have caught Mr. Bailey off guard. As chairman, I would like to answer questions, you might ask me some other questions. Mr. Bailey, you want to speak to, speak to whether the SPK proposal for the building?
There was a request that was filed after all the other requests that we were having receiving or filed, and I think, as I remember, it started, and it's very late, it could be taken up this time, committee is going to consider the size and magnitude, it is a complicated request, it takes some study as to long-term financing and so forth, and that's not something you look at lightly, so, but it's something that does need to be looked at, other than time to stay.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Hood, I would take a point of personal privilege as soon as we do the vote on the motion on the floor, and maybe shed a little more light on that, if, if you're allowed on the commission of almit, to take a point of personal privilege. Now, we're back on the motion to adopt item number three. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we're going to have that on the board. When the board opens, cast your vote on item number three. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, register the vote.
Twenty-one yes, one no, and two absent.
Having received the constitutional majority, item number three is adopted as, as provided in the original package. That completes our agenda, I'm going to... Number one. That completes our agenda, but on the hill of the agenda is item number one, which is to adopt the tax rate. So, Mr. Williams, you're recognized on item number one on today's agenda.
I've already made a statement, I guess when we first partied, this one is the, the resolution that we have to approve to actually have this tax rate a part of our two thousand eighteen budget, and you all have a copy of which mon, which amounts go to each fund, and we need to vote on that.
Mr. Williams renews his motion for adoption of item number one, taken by Commissioner Bowery, and we're hoping for discussion. Commissioner Sheldon?
In light of the amendment that Mr. Vance proposed and was accepted, shouldn't our tax rate be changed?
You're directing that question, who, because I have to recognize?
Eddie, Larry, you.
The world.
Didn't that grab the tax rate?
Anybody out there got an answer for that? Mr. Bailey, I believe you've given an answer, or Mr. Williams, I believe you've given an answer to this before, if you want to cover it one more time. Mr. Bailey?
It was my understanding, it's, it had been discussed with Mr. Vance, it would be taken from our fund balance, it would be, that we're estimating, and up to here with, and would not necessitate a tax increase out of my...
Any further discussion? Commissioner Grubbs, you're recognized. Commissioner Grubb, you're recognized.
Well, I just wanted to state that I am going to support this tax rate this time because I think throughout this lengthy discussion, it's been shown that the commission as a whole does not support making any changes into it. And I think we've had some great discussion. I think some of us have had a lot during that process. And back when we voted on $140 million, I raised my hand and voted for that. And to vote against setting some tax rate today, if I voted against that, then that would say that I did not really follow through with what I had planned on doing. So I do intend to support this. I don't think it smells real good, but it will have my support.
Thank you, Commissioner Grubb. Any further discussion on the motion to adopt item number one on today's agenda? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Vote will be on the board. Board opens, cast your vote. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, record the vote.
18 yes, 4 no, and 2 absent.
Thank you for having received constitutional majority. Item number one is adopted as prepared. And that completes our agenda as amended. And I'm going to, I will entertain, let me explain to you what we do. I'm going to entertain a motion for adjournment, but I'd like for you to keep a seat. I promised Mr. Hood I would come in personally. Mr. Bowery moves to adjourn second. All of us vote yes? All of us vote no? Where?
First off, just there was three items today, and they were all...
Right, all having to do with budget.
Okay, so just to explain, there was a tax increase. That was half some, how much tax increase?
Eight and a half cent tax increase. We moved it back to less than what our current tax basis.
What was the current?
$2.57 was the tax rate last year. We adopted today $2.55.
Okay. So is that what was considered originally? It was two?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The resolutions passed as they were presented.
Okay. So just kind of to the bit, the sheriff's lawsuit was brought up, something about the schools. How was that all tied into what you all were considering?
Well, it was part of the tax rate, obviously. And the debt service and school funding was in the budget as we prepared it. The sheriff's lawsuit settlement was in the budget as we prepared it. So we had, we had two items. Debt service was something we already approved, and the court order on the sheriff's lawsuit.
Okay. So just the budget and the tax increases, just kind of different, why were they two different items? Isn't the property tax part of it?
The nine cents only covered the sheriff's lawsuit and the debt service. Nothing else in county government really changed. We had one mandated hire, one personnel of nearly 700. But the rest of the budget was pretty much reflected by last year's budget. So there's no new spending in this budget. All of the tax rate goes to those two items.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. So what was your thoughts on the public info? There was a big turnout here today.
Oh, you know, Kenny Turner and I were telling, he said, hey, this proves our system works. And we have good community involvement. We had people tell us how they felt this budget was going to affect. Truth is sometime hard to locate when, it's harder to locate than information sometimes. So people had certain thoughts about what this budget did. They weren't all true, but it's what they think, so we needed to hear that. And maybe we can dispel those misconceptions about this budget, misconceptions about cuts over the next few weeks.
So talk about what this property tax and the budget passing means for schools. At one point, there were, everybody's losing money, right?
Schools are on two different levels, obviously. $140 million is going to allow us to close two high schools eventually. We have four high schools now that were built for 6,000 young people to go to high school. Today, we only have about 32, 3300 students. So by consolidating those into two, that's what the bond issue did. It also made some necessary renovations for King's Courts, the school system at Dobbins Bennett. It also funds a new middle school in Bristol. That was one of the things that I think the commissioners had a hard time understanding is that the cities got a windfall. Now, our state law provides that, but they didn't understand how they got a windfall when they were here objecting over a $300,000 participation on their part, which was cut. Participation on their part to pay back that money that the windfall they got. So Bristol, for example, gathered around $26, $27 million, and their school fund was cut a little over $300,000 in the operating fund. And that, I think the commission felt like that was skin in the game, let's say.
So the $140 million, is that divided equally between schools?
No, no. It's divided on bases of the average daily attendance that's taken sometime in March, April. Southern County now has about 47.5% of the students in its school system. King's Court has about 33% of the students in all of Southern County in its school system. And Bristol is about, I think, 19 and a half. So it's divided on that basis.
Okay. And so, I'm sorry, I was trying to wrap my head up. The one thing that's divided up, now, is it just going to build these schools or can they be used for other things in their budget?
No, the $140 million is to build students. But now, when we give the money to the cities, it loses a dent in the bridge. And if they don't need that, they can use it for other projects.
Okay. And so, this is the final decision today, correct?
Today is the final decision. We'll go forward on the budget and on this tax. And we're going to work with our partners in the city. We're going to work with our partner in the Southern County school system. Commission is here. We will have new proposals next month, maybe having to do with this. But it'll come to us fresh. We'll have a fresh set of eyes on it without this lawsuit hanging over our heads, without the debt service on the bond. We've handled that. We're good for the year. Now we can get down to some of the other things that people need.
And there was also an amendment for employee raises. How much was that percentage?
Commissioner Vance, I believe, proposed a 3% raise. As you know, in the sheriff's lawsuit, his people got a 5% raise. The question was, where was that money going to come from? And some of our departments, like EMS, for example, that's an enterprise fund, we will expect them to find that raised money in their budget. So it's an enterprise fund, stands on its own. Our health department operates a lot on state grants, and we will ask them to find some of the money for those raises.
And the property tax increase, you said eight and a half cents. How much would that be on a $100,000 home?
$22, I believe, a year on a $100,000 home would be the increase. There's, I think there's, there was some numbers thrown out on reappraisal. In the reappraisal, I've been advised by our property assessor's office that there were 48,000 parcels that saw an increase in their appraisal, in their assessment. 18,000 went down. They were reduced. 8,000 stayed the same. So of all the parcels, some people will see an increase because of the appraisal.
Okay. And the property tax and the budget, I'm still confused.
You're fine, you're fine.
Are both approved and finalized, or you're still looking at them?
We adopted the property tax that will, people will get their tax notices on next year. And if there were one of the 18,000 that went down, they'll probably see a reduction in the property tax. If there were one of the 48,000 that went up, they'll see an increase. And the tax rate will be responsible for only about $22 in a year when they see an increase. Possibly, the new assessment would be any other increase to that.
Okay. Anything else I'm forgetting?
I can't think of a thing today was, I think, I hope the public today saw what a complicated process this is. All of our commissioners participated, and that's a good thing. We had a few amendments from Commissioner Shaw. We had an amendment from Commissioner Vance. It really, I think, proves that our system works. We have three standing committees, and they all fumbled into the budget committee, budget committee conflicted proposal, and you saw it amended today. And that was the other two committees, executive and administrative, exercising their right to do that. So our system works pretty good.
Okay. So the sheriff's lawsuit played out for schools, I guess, would be satisfied with that?
Well, we're moving ahead. And like I said, we're going to work with them all we can. We don't want to hurt our basic education. I think this moves education forward by leaps and bounds. It's something Southern County's never done. And we had some folks catch some tough votes in here today. Okay?